All right, we'll go ahead and open up the May 18, 2020 Commission Meeting. This is meeting number 202018. And we'll start off with a prayer and then a pledge of allegiance. And we'll have Dr. Shaw Pudger here to bring us together to work prayer.
Trust in the Lord. Trust in the Lord and lean not on our own understanding, but instead lean, lean on God. Oh, Heavenly Father, we just ask that you teach us to lean on you and not to rely on our own understanding. We ask that you lead us back and that you give the wisdom and knowledge and the strength that is needed to the leaders who have the tough choices to make. We ask this in your holy name and we pray this, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance. Truth in the Bible of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so first thing we want to do is actually make a motion to move the noxious weed request to sell at auction to the next meeting, as that is not ready for this meeting. So I'd like to go ahead and make that motion.
Go ahead, second.
And with the motion second, continue discussion on that. Haring down all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we force is the consent agenda with approval of meeting minutes 202014, 202015, and 202016. We also have fireworks license from J.D.A. Fireworks LLC. There are two of them. We have another fireworks license from Wholesale Fireworks Enterprises LLC, and there are also two of those.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
So with the motion second, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have approval for claims for payment amount of $270,443.49. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I second it.
And with the motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this point, we have open public comments. Limit of five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting, so the microphone is open if someone wants to approach. I know this is kind of more of a challenging time since there's limited people in the room. We'll find out. Not sure if anybody's out in the hall.
Do you want me to go see?
I think he's texting on it.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate that. Nope, okay. Moving on, we have no unfinished business and no legal counsel, so we'll turn it right over to the county administrators report.
First item on the report, gentlemen, is for County Emergency Manager Rex Beamer to discuss the extension of the resolution to extend the emergency declaration.
Good afternoon, John.
Thank you, Rex.
Hi, Rex.
I'd like to come to you and request that we extend the emergency declaration for another 60 days. We're still getting protected here from the state. We have shelters set up here in town and the tent and the test site and everything, so we've still got a lot of resources here. And being in line with the Stafford Act and how all that plays, we need to have that extension in place.
And if we don't do the extension, what happens?
It makes it harder for us to get the supplies and everything because our chain of command is the county has to have a declaration in place before we are actually supposed to go to the state to get any supplies.
Okay. Right now, I was out at the facility today, and I think some other people have driven by and been out there. There is a tent up, and you have people coming in and getting testing under the shade of the tent. A very efficient, it's unbelievable compared to maybe other counties I've witnessed this in where there is nothing like that. I mean, there's no drive-through. And I know the gentleman who was directly in front of me was from Clark County, farmer. And I know of people from, it seems like every county around us that has come over to use our facility instead of theirs. So it almost creates more of a hub of testing versus, I mean, it seems like we're doing maybe what the state needs in other places, is maybe other counties need to be hubs as well to get this testing done right.
Initially, it was set out just for Ford County, Fiddy County, and Seward County because of the outbreaks they had in the packing houses and everything. And they liked what happened, so they just went ahead and opened it up. And now other people can come in and do the testing also, and are able to get the test right away, where you're able to start making those contacts a lot quicker than take them to the doctor's office and then have them send it off to the lab, and then wait a couple of days to get the results back. So it's made it pretty nice. A lot more work on Angela, too.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the extension of resolution number 202007.
Okay.
So that's got a new resolution number?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go second then. So we have a motion second to approve extending resolution 202009 for 60 days. I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And against?
Maybe we could ask you a few questions?
Oh.
I didn't know you'd get such a big ear. My question is, 60 days from now, what date is that?
I haven't looked at the calendar to see the date, but if things start ramping down, we can always resend that and cancel it anytime we want. It doesn't have to maintain that 60 days.
Are we gonna, this gonna change the way the restaurants work? Air gun places and all that deal, are we?
No.
No, this doesn't affect any of that. This is just the testing.
Only question I wanted to know, when does this affect?
Supplies. Systems.
This is the supply chain, as all this is, plus it's affording us the torque protection, things of that nature, so.
What kind of protection?
Torque. That has to deal with insurance purposes, on legal liabilities, things of that nature.
That's all I wanted to know. You were ramping around. I thought maybe that you were gonna get another test done here yet today, your Chris.
Mr. Snook, how would you like to vote on this one?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, item number two is about county operations in regards to the governor's ad-aster plan in the new Phase 1.5. Just wanted to know if you guys want to add any extra restrictions or stay with what she has out now.
She goes back thinking ever, ever, 1.75?
Well, my feeling that I have is I wouldn't want to go any tighter than what she has done so far. I think that last meeting I kind of spoke up about how I just thought it was interesting that she kept some businesses out of it, which it seems like she's looked back around and grabbed those businesses now. And I'm appreciative of that. I mean, because I think that she probably was watching what other governors were doing, and she would got full-blown states opening up already. And they have numbers like, just like we do. So I just think that maybe that's where, you know, county operations, I think, I wouldn't want to, in my mind, I wouldn't, I'm not voting to open this back up. But I'm not, I'm not willing to make it tighter than what she's got either. But I'm definitely open to conversation on it. And we don't have to make a motion here either, right? I mean, this is...
You don't have to do anything if you're not adding any restrictions.
Yeah. It's a real, it's discussion.
I think I made my position pretty clear last time we talked about this.
I thought you done a great job. You changed my end before I looked at you, my friend. And I'd say that as a positive post, because we've lost a lot of our liberty rights.
Always through the lens of liberty. We've done too much to begin with, we're too slow getting it fixed. I would go along with the chairman that we've got, we've got other places in the country that are open up, got numbers very similar to ours.
And some of the reasons we have some of the numbers we have, we're testing some of them up here.
Right, yeah.
And I, you know, which is good. I'm not...
It is good. I mean, we're, our, our numbers are, are, I think the closest one to us now is 15 or 16 behind us on as far as numbers per thousand that we're testing, you know? We've done a good job here, I think, with that. Angela, you've done a good job with, with all of this. That said, we gotta get people back to work. This is, this has taken too long. It's been in place too long.
I think with the second...
It's not, it's not, it's no longer serving the purpose that was originally set out when, when we, when we first started implementing this, the kind of stuff. You know, this, this flattening the curve and making sure our hospitals aren't overrun is crazy. Hospitals are laying people out because they haven't got enough business to keep themselves afloat, to keep those, to keep those people employed. It was interesting, when we, when we had this conversation, we had some folks here that were strong proponents for having stricter, tighter controls put on by the county than what the, than what the governors, than what the governors' actions were. And, you know, there again, they had expert medical opinions, but this is, this is not just about, about medicine. It's not just about physical health. It's about all of the aspects of, of health, you know? And having people work and being able to provide for their families and things like that, all goes into that as well. What I regret here today is that we can't open up further than what the governors say.
Even on those same thoughts, you know, you got the 800 numbers for the suicide prevention line going crazy. You've got Comus Behavioral Health telling us that they're dealing with more patients now than ever. I mean, people are just, it's a different, it's a different stress on the, on the family. And even the sheriffs tell us about numbers, you know, for domestic violence. And I think that there's just a lot more to talk about than just, you know, overrun hospitals, which never happened. So hearing that, I don't hear anybody making a motion so far to be any stricter.
I certainly don't want to be any stricter.
Okay, so if that is the case, we can move right along to the county engineers report.
Good, all right. The reason I said that about 1.75, I was totally shocked when you came up with 1.5. And everybody, all my friends from all over the heck just called me and talking about Ford County's got so many more cases. And I said, "You don't understand, we're testing." And I think that's good.
Yep. I think we should reapplaud him.
And that no doubt's what got me. I sometimes talk too much. And by the way, Mr. Tassit, Commissioner Tassit, you've done a real, real good job two weeks ago.
Absolutely appreciate it.
You, you, that was a lot of thought.
We can call it there, Mr. Gilbert. I was trying to get a hold of John.
Mr. Hobelwitz? Let me see if I have the text message right on that. There he is. Hey, John?
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm doing good, I'm under stress.
Good. Well, you have the floor. Everybody's waiting to listen to you.
Good afternoon, sir. I missed a tick down just a second too late on the first go around there. So I was asked for that.
Hi, John.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tassit. Nice to report that the sun is shining and the weather's nice today.
How's your dad and mom?
I'm sorry, I went over that.
How's your dad and mom?
How are your, how are your parents?
Oh, they're doing well. Thanks for asking, yep. They're trying to keep close to home, that they're keeping themselves out of harm's way, and so far, so good. Appreciate that.
That's good.
I'm ready to give a quick update on Ford County engineering activity in the last month. And also, I was gonna give a brief overview of the announcement by KDOT last week on their new tenure transportation program, which stands hard in just the recent history here. First on Ford County business, I'm gonna go through just the things that are active for what I'm working on currently. First would be the Osseton Bridge 31 reconstruction and roadway realignment project, which is in the Dulce Dodd City. We are proceeding ahead with the 55 mile per hour roadway design that has been presented a couple months ago. And the county survey is working on writing the legal descriptions for the purchase of the right of way that would be needed for that alignment. Once those are ready to go, the county roof superintendent will coordinate the two landowners in that area about moving forward with discussions and negotiations on purchasing the property for that project, along with coordinating with the county council if needed. So that project will be moving forward. On the planned paved road reclamation project, starting with Jewel Road to the east of Wright, Kurt Michael did get out there last week and completed the field topographical survey needed for the project between Wright and 126th Road. And we'll now commence with developing construction plans. When did the KDOT cost share application submitted? Yesterday, actually, it was due today by 5:00, but I went in and I was in here, got it put together and turned it yesterday. We did get a number of letters of support. One from the Spiritville School District, one from the City of, excuse me, City of Spiritville, two from the Ag Alliance Facility, and one from the local citizen as well, in Spiritville. Got several letters of support to go with the application, and certainly that will help in the schooling process with KDOT. So it should, you see, it'll probably take KDOT a month to six weeks, something like that, to make project selection and announce, maybe two months. We'll see how it goes. So the plan would be then that we'll get the plans completed early in the summer, where we can advertise a bit about first project. Again, it's only gonna be a portion of that corridor from Wright to 126th to begin with, based on the amount of funding that is available. And we'll see what kind of budget we get for possible starting construction yet this summer or fall, or we will allow the contractor to start next spring, which will be pretty late in the year for bidding projects. And looking down my list, I did get some additional email correspondence about the Iron Star Wind Farm. Sounds like the developer of that project is moving forward with the geotactical investigations that they need for the wind farm construction project itself. I got to know a little bit of that in that process. They just have given us notes of case that they're planning to get started at Wright. And they have not yet submitted their potential use permit application at this time, where I would see that the zoning director sent an email a lot ago, I haven't had a chance to read it yet to see what was in it.
Probably the title's...
Just about 30 or 40 minutes ago, we sent out another email, just for more information. And of course, we're still continuing to work with the Graydelf Express with their power line project, which we really haven't had any recent activity since the township meeting in February, and some additional discussions after that in March. But they will, they are planning, working to move forward with the project with construction , I think, in early 2022, if I remember right. Put that on my list, I have that to leave. Okay, that was the report of the county engineering activities, if you would have any questions or additional things to pass by me today. I do hope to be able to come out there in June for an inquiry meeting.
I would just say, John, that I have heard from a couple of, you know, landowners regarding the Ironwood Wind Project there, that they have, there are some of them have received, oh, the new, the new agreements that they're, that they're putting out for the, for the landowners there. There, I think there's some concern with, with that, that agreement that they're asking the landowners to sign on to there, so that'll be something up for discussion here near future, I'm sure.
Yep, it would be a wise idea for them to possibly seek legal counsel as well if they have any questions or concerns. From what I've heard, I would anticipate that with, if it was to go into construction, would be late, probably late this year, early 2021, from what things are looking so far.
That's all I had.
Okay, if there's no other comments on the county, I'll go on to the KDOT information.
Okay.
So I believe there should have been some literature included in your commissioner packet. This is the KDOT, I call it the IAC, or Eisenhower Legacy Transportation Program, which was passed by the Kansas Legislature and signed by the Governor into law early in 2020. This is kind of a follow-up to the local consultation meeting that KDOT has done in 2019 in the Kansas Legislative Task Force, which made statewide two over 2018, where they solicited not only interest and support for a future highway program, but also solicited potential project locations that may be new from what was identified in the past. And so last week, KDOT announced the first selection of what they're calling the bigger projects, the geoelectric improvement, or the modernization type projects, modernization and expansion projects. So I only sent out just what was presented for District 6, which is southwest Kansas. But this information is all available on the KDOT website, so present it in public with to see what projects were announced. They can go on KDOT's website, and on the main page, there is a link to go to the IAC program that has project listings for all six districts across the state. And certainly bear in mind, this, again, these are only the modernization and expansion projects, but these projects do not, this listing does not include their annual maintenance type programs, which would be asphalt overlays, chip seals, bridge repairs, and some bridge replacement projects, that are pretty much just the bridge itself, not any roadway walls. So there'll be many more projects going on additionally on this particular list, but these are the major projects that they're proposing. So statewide, they announced 40 projects that are on the list. And of course, only a portion of those are in southwest Kansas, but I'd be of interest to share this list, especially the Ford County portion, and there's been many discussions in the past couple of years with the county commission about the need and desire for passing lanes on highways in Ford County, as there currently are none, actually in place. So on the second page, for instance, of the packet that I provided, it's got two different locations there for potential passing lanes. One is on Highway 50, which is east of Wright, so basically from Wright, east to the Edward County Line, somewhere in that region. They've identified a location to construct some passing lanes. And then again, actually, I went too far, I said, I said Wright to the county lines. Actually, the first location is between Wright and Spiritville, and the second location is between Spiritville and the Edward County Line. There's pretty two different locations there for passing lanes in Ford County. I will say that currently, these projects on this list are only funded for design, and so being that they are going under design is not guaranteed that they will go into construction, by the way, as design progresses, and then obviously how funding is available will determine when the projects actually go to construction. Other items that have a particular interest to people in Ford County would be the first project listed there, which is a construction of a four-lane expressway from the Fiddy County Line to Cimarron. And then it's got a, the second item is a four-lane freeway from Highway 50 from the east of Garden City to the Fiddy Gray County Line. So I would, it doesn't say exactly how far east of Garden City that is, but it is four lanes, you know, out to the airport now, so I would assume that that is more or less from that, with that four-lane end on east into the Gray County Line, because it's only four miles in length. But then, so those two projects were complete, the four-lane expressway between Garden City and Dodd City, which are completely built.
And John?
Yes?
I'm having trouble finding the part from Cimarron to Dodd City on here. I can see a spot on the map there, but I'm not seeing it listed in the project information.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So that, that actually is, that was a T-Works project, surprised not on the actual list, because these are IAC projects. Since you brought that up, that project, the four-lane between Dust and Cimarron, is in the final design stages, and KDOT is actually advancing the letting for that project. I just have that in front of me, let me see if I can find that date again. Sorry about that, I had the file in front of me, must have closed it on accident, I will find it in just a moment. I will find it in just a moment. Okay, so they are advancing the letting date on that project to August of 2021. And so that would be next, next summer is when they're planning to let that four-lane expansion project, or they could start construction either late 2021 or early 2022.
Okay. John, do they, do they say, do they say what order they're going to build these roads in?
Are you asking about the ICH program project?
Yes.
No, they're not giving a specific order at this time. Certainly, the smaller projects and smaller scope, as well as dollarized projects, would be faster to design and easier to fund, so I would, I would assume in this current climate where availability of money can be probably questionable for the foreseeable future because of all the things going on with COVID-19, I would think it would be reasonable to assume that the smaller projects might go first. One, a lot less work to design and to give permits and environmental clearances for adding a passing lane to an existing highway as opposed to adding two holding lanes or perhaps building four lanes off longer river line, so wouldn't likely, I would guess, the passing lane projects would go first, but that's really up to KDOT, so I don't know
I appreciate your work on this. I know as a, as a commissioner, it really is, again, disheartening when you see another 90 million, plus another 20 million going into the Finy County to Gray County versus, you know, 6 million and 6 million going to Ford County, and it just, it's really, it's really sad how much money has actually been spent in Finy County versus Seward or Ford when you're looking at population size, and it just, their, their highways are massive and wide and two lanes each direction, lots of room in between them, and all we're looking for is passing lanes. And once again, it seems like maybe of the same, we've been kind of scooted down the list to get, you know, $110 million into Finy County going into Gray County versus just 12 million going into Ford County. Just sad, it's really sad, to be honest with you. But I appreciate your time on that.
You're welcome for that data, and I, I need you at all to be of interest to hear what's going on with the KDOT program, deciding to see it getting started, anyway. Certainly keep you apprised as things, new, new news comes about on the program as well.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all I have to report today, if anybody have any questions or other information for me.
I don't, John.
Yeah, I don't either.
All right, thank you, John.
All right, thank you, everybody, and you know, stay safe.
All right, have a good week.
You too, appreciate it. Take care, guys.
See you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, gentlemen, the next two items on the agenda are for Jim Carlson of KNRC.
Good afternoon.
How you doing, Jim?
I'm doing, doing well, thank you. I have some amended, amended packet, package here that I helped show the clerk or the commissioner.
Okay.
As I, as I'm walking around handing these, these out, I want to thank the Ford County Commission, we're entering our seventh year as a coalition of county, coalition of counties.
Thank you.
And I've never been by to visit this board.
Where'd you, where'd you, where'd you?
Well, this is, this is actually, that one was the pre-COVID version, and so it wasn't quite, this, this was the one that was the latest version, so there's one for the city administrator. So thank you for being a member of, of county administrators.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, go ahead and, okay, yeah.
We, we know how the mind runs when you get in front of one of these.
Yeah, that's, that's all right.
That was more the smile, we, we always joke about that after, like, these meetings run in our minds like 100 miles an hour, and when you're sitting here in front of it, it's, it's taking time, and you kind of go through the process.
At least I picked up the smile.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tassit had the best one a couple of years, a couple of years ago, we talked about this all the time, about the, the resolution you were trying to-
Child abuse?
Yeah, the child abuse.
I declared, uh, I declared May to be the child abuse month in Ford, Ford County.
Instead of child abuse prevention.
Instead of prevention, we have child abuse here, so.
I wouldn't want to be in that Tassit household when he walks home. He had something on his mind, I'm sure.
I believe he has teenagers, as do I. So, but thank you, thank you for being a member of KNRC, we're, we're getting, almost entering our eighth year, and we've had a number of wins, and the coalition has done a number of things. We live on a pretty shoestring budget, we do a number of cool things, and so I'm going to talk about that, I'm going to talk about two things today, and first is, the first one is, is not so good, so we'll get the not as great news out first, and that's going to be the Great Western Trail designation, and then I'm going to pivot in and I'm going to talk about the Rails and Trails Accountability Project. There's, with regard to the Rails to Trails Accountability Project, I'm hoping this board will consider adopting a program that we've been working on for three years, and it's the Rails to Trails Accountability Program for local governments, and I'll show you what, why that's a positive program, not just for KNRC counties, but nationwide. So on the Great Western Trail Project, what this is, is that in 2010 National Park Service, the, that's a, that's a division of the Department of Interior, National Park Service came out in 2010, and, and they had some initiative to do that, and they proposed designation of two trails in Kansas, one would be the Chisholm Trail in the east central part of the state, and the second would be the Great Western Trail, which is one, the trail that we're going to talk about here. That was during the first, second, first Obama administration, that designation. And so then it entered what's called the NEPA process, and so there's three, administratively, there's three, three steps to designation of a national historic trail, there's three steps. And so admin, and we're now on, we're on potential for step three. So it was, both trails were proposed, then they went through the NEPA process, and then in, in September of 16, the National Park Service issued a finding of no significant impact, meaning they went through the NEPA process, and they said there's no significant impact, they took comments from, from the public, and so then they issued what's called a Fonzie, you're probably familiar with those, and then after taking public comment, and so, so now we've gone through the, that, that NEPA process, and both the National Park Service recommended those two trails for designation as a historic trail. So now that brings us to the Congress, and then the next step there would be to introduce legislation that designated both trails as, as a, a national historic trail, and then if it passes the Congress and is signed by the President, then it becomes a historic trail. And so our Senator Moran, last, last winter, and that's in your package, your board packets, there's a bill that, that has been drafted, it has not been introduced into the Congress, so that's important, and by Senator Moran's office, and so it's, it's floating out there, it hasn't been introduced now. And you're, you're, you're familiar with the legislative process, sometimes senators will appease constituents by having legislation drafted, but they don't introduce it. And I'm not saying that's the case, or it's not, but it hasn't been introduced. One thing the Senator's, Senator Moran's office did do was that they sent Kansas State University, whose press pushing is the, the, oh, the economic development people in K-State, are, are pushing this trail designation. And so they, Senator Moran's office said, go, go talk to KNRC and Carlson, and so chances are that that Senator, Senator Moran knows probably the position that they're taking, but I'm not sure, and that's one of the reasons I'm here before the war, too, maybe not to get your opinion today, but maybe get, take your temperature on this potential designation. So that's where we are as far as the legislative process that hasn't been introduced into the, the Congress. Now, there's, there's, if it were, if it were to be introduced and then passed by the Congress, or the Senate and the House, then the last step is what's called a, the management planning process. And the management plan is what is, for counties, what they should be interested in, I'll use the word interested, but, or concerned, depending on who you are, but the, during, and for private property owners as well, because what the management planning process does is that's where they take an inventory of the trail across all private and public lands. And that inventory is where they identify things that may be of interest, and those could be ruts, barns, outhouses, fences, that, you know, could be grandma's, you know, grandma's house from, from-
Old saw here or something.
Yeah, right. So, and, and they do an inventory on both public and private lands, so there are, there are landholders in western Kansas who would not be interested, or who would be concerned with it. So there's two ways to look at this, and I'll, I'll give you a glimpse of this and I'll move on, but there's two ways to look at this from the, from the economic development people, they'll say that the trail, National Historic Trail designation brings in tourism, and they bring in folks to the hotels and restaurants and those kinds of things, and so that's, that's typically what they'll, that would be their position. To the landholders, to the landholders, it may or may not be as positive. If you picture in your mind's eye a trail cutting across three landholders' properties, and landholder, landholder A is interested in this trail, landholder B is not on my watch or my children's watch, nor do you know how, and landholder C is ambivalent, there's pressure that's, that's imposed on landholder B to let people have access to their property. And so that's, that's one possible concern. To the, from the county perspective, there can be tax evasion from landholders donating, donating to the landholder, to the National Historic Trails designation, donating their property to the interior, and then it can come off the tax rolls. That is a definite concern to the counties. Third, land use plans, and this is kind of a stealthy, this is going on across the nation. In the land use planning process, you can have a backdoor way for zoning. Now, that's not so much of an issue here, I don't even think Ford County has zoning, do you?
Yeah, we do.
You, you are, okay. So, so there can be some implications on the county because if there's federal dollars tied to some other nexus, those can be, they can, they can impose, they can, it's a backdoor way to say your funding is tied to how, if you adopt the trail on your land use plans. And then, so, so those are the, kind of the two perspectives of the inventory management process, and this can go on a long time, so far it's gone on, gone on 10 years. So this board could retire, your, your sons or your daughters could occupy this board, and, and, and it can, and so it's, it's something that is important to Americans. So with that, that's the trail designation. Now, the last thing is you-
Jim, I hope you have just a second, because I'd like to say something about the, the deal about the landowners there, you were talking about landowner A, B, and C, and, and the guy in the middle feeling the pressure to, to participate in this thing. We actually have something similar with the Riverbed down here right now, that, that I see this happening with, is that, you know, that landowner B that has no interest in participating in this thing sees the trespass on his, on his property and things like that because the trail is here and they can see the trail over there, and the direct line in between is the quickest way to go. And, and we have it right here in the county already, is that, you know, sometimes whenever that's the goal, the boundaries don't mean anything. The, the ownership boundaries don't mean anything to some people. And that's, that's the, the problem that I see with this thing, is that even for a landowner that stands his ground and says no, that doesn't always mean no to everybody. And they come on anyway.
Right, and some people, no is the first step on the way to a yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that comment about that, please continue.
Sorry, you're, you're talking about serious discussions.
But this has already been going on 10 years, right?
Right, yes, yes.
And so we already know that Washington's probably, I think, company close to being out of money, isn't it, any of us, right?
I'm sorry?
Washington is completely out of money right now, with the big giveaway, right?
They were out of money some time ago, yes, before this.
I know, but, well, we're talking about a project that probably won't do well.
National Park Service has a maintenance backlog of, of billions of dollars.
So does Harvard University, because I want to talk about that.
Right.
The point is those, the projects still keep happening even though they're out of money. That doesn't seem to be the-
Here's the risk, if I can take that, is that it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to bother the Congress to approve these even though there's no money to designate, they're, they're still designating them, but the risk is, is that you're still imposing in the National Park Service a, a, a trail designation across seven Kansas counties.
Which is, we're going to be taking it out of, out of our budget here.
Well, I can't see it directly affecting Ford County.
Well, I know, but...
I mean, it's a concern.
What did you say, one of the designations coming up from KDOT was Dodge City, right?
Right, right.
And I can show you where some of the trails are at right now.
Well, I, I, your packet should have this map in it.
It doesn't have that one.
It doesn't?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, never mind, it's the last page.
This is, this is the map that's important to, to this commission. And so if you turn to that, what KNRC did is we took, this is not what the, see, the trail people didn't, the big map that the trail people put out is, was this one, it's on the back, it's the big, what we did is we went and pulled down, we spent money, we spent money, and what we did is we went and pulled the government data for the trail designation from National Park Service. And so this is, this is the trail here using government data of where it would fall in Ford County. And what, and so what we did is, is you can actually see, we've got it down to the quarter sections here, and just south of Dodge City, the trail splits and goes over Highway 56 and comes into Dodge City. Now, when I looked at this, I said, what are they going to do with that? You'd have a federal designation coming into the city. And so I, you know, I, I don't know how that would work.
It actually goes right through our, our actual center.
Yeah.
Right, so, right, and then the, the left leg, or the, the west leg branches off and goes to the north, and so it's fairly easy to identify. Now, we were up in Hodgman County, and Commissioner McNair got visibly agitated, and he came, came around to my desk and he said, you see that, that quarter section right there? My family broke out that ground. So, but the point is, is that, that this, I just encourage the commission to study this, and then, and consider taking a position at some point, or informing KNRC where your thoughts are. So that's why I'm here, is that it's kind of what do you think? Because in, in September, and that's why I handed out the rabbi's bulletin, we're going to convene a, a, a member of commissions on Friday, September 18th, and we're going to, we're going to take a position as a, as a coalition. And then what we'll do is we'll write, we'll write that up in one of our bulletins- And then what we'll do is we'll write, we'll write that up in one of our bulletins and then we'll pass that up through Senator Moran's office or even more, we might take a position on it. Because there's problems actually with the Fonz and the EEA. So sometimes K-N-R-C takes those positions and says, there's problems here, we want to revisit this. So we do that for, for our members.
So this was the not-so-good news?
That was the not-so-good news. And here, on the Rails to Trails Accountability Project, we're gonna show you how your K-N-R-C dollars over time are actually benefited. They won't benefit, this won't be an example where it benefits Fort County, but it will be an example that, that benefits other, other counties as well. Our other counties, or will benefit Hodgman, who is a member, Kiowa if they wish to join, Comanche, and, and those three counties.
Clark.
Well, here, and here's, here's what, here's what's going on with Clark. Clark has adopted, Clark County's adopted the Rails to Trails Accountability Program, which is a, this is basically an ordinance, ordinance and a land use plan. So Clark, Clark has adopted it. And basically, the problem we're solving is this, is you have, here, here's the situation. You have railroads who, who have stopped using their rail lines over time. And the, the Congress in the mid nineteen seventies did a, a trail, a National Trail System Act, which allowed for what's called rail banking. And what that could, what, what that was is that the railroads could transfer the, on an interim basis, the rail alignment to trail providers, still maintain the potential to put that rail line back into service, but the taxes and the fencing and the maintenance would all fall to the rail, trail providers. Okay? So it sounds like a great program, but what's, what we're finding is that it, it starts here in Kansas, but the scope of this is nationwide, is all these, these nonprofit trail providers are, are accepting all of the tax liabilities and everything like that. And they're, they're accepting that, the railroads are spinning it off to the trail providers, and they're not paying taxes, they're not doing maintenance, and they're not taking care of their, 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 their responsibilities. And the counties can't go after the, haven't, to this point, haven't been able to go after the trail providers because they're nonprofits and they have a post office blocks and they, they just can't, they, and so, so, and it's, and we're finding the situation is going on nationwide. Now, Clark, here, so here's what we did, is in Clark County, Clark is very, very interested in this, and the Sunfar Rails to Trails people, our, our conservancy, that would be Richard Stein, by the way, you know, he has a medical practice here, and Richard Stein is the president of that.
We know Richard, Dr. Turner.
Right.
I know him.
Is he still practicing?
No, I don't think so. He's a lot of tennis.
Right. So, the, in, in Clark County, there's a rail, when they had the fires three years ago, all this debris accumulated against the rail trestle and, and it, and it poses an engineering and a fire and structural hazard. And so what, what we, what we've done is we were writing the, through the Rails to Trails Program, we're-
Part of the railroad tracks pulled up now. More of those cars on the bucket that pulled up.
And I, and I'm, I'm taking a lot of time here, so I'll, I'll try and cut to the chase here, but what, no one's been able to find a way to hold the trail providers accountable to their state statutory requirements. And we found a way. And the way is, the way that is, is that we're going to document to the record that the things they haven't, haven't been doing in Fort County. And then if they don't, and document to the record and the Surface Transportation Board, if they don't fulfill their requirements, then what we do is we, it will petition, Clark will petition the Surface Transportation Board for their permit to be revoked, and then it'll either go back to the railroad or revert to the landowners. All right. Now, here's, here's the, here's the cool thing, is you, in Fort County, you have the Boot Hill Trail, but in your packet here, and this is, this is where one of our researchers is very thorough, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty, this is, this is the, this is a decision by the Surface Transportation Board. But here's what's important about this, is in, there's, across, across Clark County, Comanche, and Kiowa County, and Pratt, there's a trail that, there's a trail that this, the landholder there wanted it to be, the, the trail to revert back. The Surface Transportation Board said no. You know, but, but what was part of that is that the KNO Railroad was not able to find their agreement. And so the, the permit was never properly consummated through Kiowa, Comanche, and Pratt County. Now, what that means is that the, now those counties can go back and, and file a, a back taxes through the KNO Railroad for twelve years because it wasn't properly consummated. Okay? And so that, so that's, that's, that's in your packet here. So I've become, if the ask is, this board is to consider this resolution and maybe have your legal counsel look over the Rails to Trails Accountability Program. And, and we'd sure like to have all our members adopt it, to have trails. And I'm willing to take any questions from your attorney or come back to the board with questions.
Jim, is that something that will be, I guess, discussed or decided or whatever at that September meeting as well, or?
It can be. What, what I'm doing is approaching individual members who have trails. You have the Boot Hill Trail here.
So I guess that's what I'm asking is, do we need to have this considered and have something decided by, by September, what was it, eighteenth, that you were talking about, meeting that?
Yes, then or before. But now, one thing you could do, and Sean, you looked into this, or Commissioner Caston, you looked into this before, is you, you asked your assessor's office if they, if the, the Boot Hill Trail needed to pay taxes on that alignment. And they determined no. And I think that that needs to have a really solid looks, going back and asking the question, did, here's the question that you asked your assessor. Did the, did the railroad ever pay taxes on it, ever historically? Because my guess is what's happening across the counties in Kansas is there was a, there was a cert, there was a Board of Tax Appeals decision in the mid nineteen nineties that said trail providers don't have to pay taxes. We don't agree with that decision, we think it's wrong, and we don't think it applies to counties, we think the county's ought to take another look at it. So chances are the assessor's office of Fort County at that time looked at that decision and says, well, we can't do anything, made a determination and walked away. And when in reality, there may be an opportunity for, for, for Fort County in particular, but other counties do to, um, go back and-
At least a portion of this that's on here right now, I believe we are being paid taxes on, because there's a rail still there and there are actually historic cars on it. So we checked into that, at least that portion of it, and I'm pretty sure that, that taxes are being collected on at least that portion. So, but, you know, the rest of it on, on through where the rail's been pulled up, that, that, I don't know.
I think, I think it bears investigation for-
Jim, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming over.
Did you get your coffees?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Item number six is for Main's Director, Don Lormont, to discuss some needs at the fairgrounds.
Hi, Don.
Hello, Don.
How good, how are you?
I'm good.
Don, just before we start, will there actually be a fair this year? Do you know that?
I don't know for sure.
Do you know what the date would have been on that one? Is it, do you know what, roughly what month that would have been in? Is that July?
No, ours is July. First part of July, about tenth or so.
Yeah.
That sounds right.
Early in the month, don't-
First half of July, I'm pretty sure, so, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, you're all right. I, we're trying to get something, updating the building, the signing and stuff. We've discussed this in a couple of quarter sections already. Uh, the, basically the building started a week or a while, the most, compared to, uh, both buildings, uh, the signings kind of rusted, gave more to it, and, well, the last ones, we can never quite match it. We have, it's very bad yet, so, other than the passing of blowhead. Uh, just here to see how far we can do, if we should proceed with this.
We need to move the footer down, down the lake shore. And it was built for, for four H and the three O shit. That was the, that was the promise that the pressure made in those days, and they built that one. I don't know why we'd want to spend money down there. Because you could spend four hundred dollars down there. And that doesn't make very much sense. We can sell that knowing like it is, because Hispanics love it, and that, and that. Well, that's what to do. Ask the law, do it the law.
I've got another party. I know what you mean. Okay? There you go. I've got to close it down. Yeah, I understand.
That's, that's basically, we need to move that deal out here, actually. That's mine. I'm not speaking for the government, okay?
No, I understand.
Well, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Snook about the, about the fair. I, I, we talked about this already last year when we went through the budget process with Jake, Mr. Ring, and, you know, I, I asked him at that time, you know, that, I feel like we need to start thinking about getting the fair and, and the four H advance and things like that, moving out to the Expo Center out there, because maintenance on, on these buildings, I think, is, um, is becoming a little more expensive than, than what I feel like the property's worth. So, yeah, I, I actually agree with, and of course, with things the way they are and us not knowing, uh, our revenues with everything going on right now and that kind of thing, I don't think that signing on to fixing those buildings, even if we were so inclined to do that right now, would be a, a great idea, so. I think, I think we've got some other things that we're gonna have to think about not doing already because of this stuff, so.
I don't, I don't want to go out on a limb, but I've had a lot of people talk to me about Fort County Fair, and I know that Jake's been in front of this, and I've never been to the fair. I don't know that it's very well attended. I don't know if that's, like, if at some point that was a really big motion for the commission to move a certain way, and maybe, you know, if those attendance numbers could get up, that would be something that we'd want to support more. I, I know I've used that building, but it's, and for other functions, yeah. And, you know, I've always found this to be kind of an odd situation with the county, where I, I don't really understand truly our role at that point with what those structures are really for anymore. I mean, I get, I, I don't, I don't understand the process of us having someone else rent the facility and they keep the rent or that setup. And I'm not here to ask you all those questions, Don, but I'm just mentally going through it in my mind, like, I just don't, I don't know if it's maybe just something that we move away from, and, and if they want to do a fair, they do a fair, if they want to, you know, it doesn't have to be paid for by Fort County citizens if maybe it's not something really big. Maybe, maybe we move them to the Expo, I don't know. But I, I definitely agree that the Western State Bank Expo Building is an amazing facility, and we're keeping that one up. And I just think with this one, I, I don't, I don't really, know that it really fits what we do. I just, I've always kind of been torn about it, so.
I can answer some questions about the fair if you have, because I've had several meetings with Jake, so if you have questions.
Oh, Jake was at the company, I'll come over and connect with him.
Well, you know, as far as the fair goes, Mr. Chairman, the, the fair and, and the four H activities, that's, that's incredibly, uh, number one, valuable to, to those youngsters that, that participate in that. The, and, and it's just super important to those families. And, and actually, it's super important to our community in, in a way that's, a lot of folks don't, aren't able to realize. The leadership and things that those kids get from, from those activities is, is pretty top-notch, it really is. And, and I'm, I'm sad that it's not, uh, it's not, what am I trying to, attended more than it is in, in our county. And I, you know, and I think the Fort County Extension Agency Council has, has worked on several different ideas and, and things to, to improve that program, and be able to bring maybe some economies of scale in for, for that kind of thing and, and, and improve that, that overall experience with the four H and, and hopefully trying to bolster the, the, the competition that those kids get to experience in, in that fair setting. So I, I believe in the fair, I do. And I believe in those four H programs and what they do for those kids. And I don't want, I, I would be against, you know, doing anything that takes that away from them. But we have a great facility out there, the Expo Center, and, and, you know, we built, we built that stalls building and, and have that dirt side there with, with the, in the arena, and, you know, I, I don't know what all can be, what all can be used there, but we, we should be able to move our fair out there, I think.
Well, and a year or so ago, when, when we talked about this again, Jake and I, you know, you asked that Jake and I sit down, and we did that, and White and a lot of detail went over, you know, what does, what does their current property consist of, and how does that relate to the Expo Center? You know, what do you need to, to do what you do at the current property at the Expo Center as far as buildings and amenities and things like that? And so we, we compiled all of that, and it's, I thought I had a really good idea, and I did, but there was a lot of things that I was surprised about. And we, today, as the building says, we can't accommodate the fair. And, you know, what we talked about was, you know, to make the Expo Center accommodate the fair, and, and both of our opinions would be ridiculous. What we would need to do is make the Expo Center fit larger events, livestock-type events, because that would still accommodate the Fort County Fair and the needs of, of those kids and, and participants, but still allow the Expo Center to do more events, you know, because numbers are down. And it's not just Fort County, it is, I think, across, in general, with livestock showing, fair, fouragers, numbers are down. And it's been a steady decline of numbers, I think, just across the board, not just this county. And so to build, or to modify, or to buy equipment, things that are needed to fit the Fort County Fair, in reality, would not fit any other event, it would be too small, if that makes sense. And so- And so that's why we really talked a lot about, okay, what are the basic things that you need? You know, if you, how big of a facility, how big of a structure do you need for the birds? Because those have to be in a certain, they have to be secure, they have to be temperature-controlled, you know, and, you know, just things like that that we're not set up for. And so it was like, okay, so if this works for Ford County Fair, what else can we do with it? And that was the approach that we took. I don't know if that helps.
So what do we have at the facility down there at the fairgrounds now that they're accommodating those, those things that you're talking about that we couldn't move out and use at the Expo?
Pretty much everything. You know, about the only thing that we could do is the, help them report where they display the photos, you know, the photo competition.
Of the sides?
Yeah, inside.
They have their displays and their bakery.
Yeah. Paintings, just the non-animal exhibits. You know, we could do that. Obviously, our space is too big. We're not temperature-controlled, but I think you guys, is that?
It has water in there.
Right, and we can do that as well.
No, you know, we really had the trash.
So, you know, the birds, ducks, chickens, those are in a separate building that I think they double the rest of the year as a storage shed. And then they clean that out, and that's where it goes. Because they are able to secure it and also keep it cooler in there because obviously, birds can't take as much heat as everything else. We don't have any of the small animal pens. That stall barn wasn't quite set up for livestock shows with drainage as far as waste drainage, water, things like that. We can do, we can do small things, and I think we can get by with that. But right now, their small animal is mostly a hard surface floor like concrete. There are some smaller areas that are a dirt or sand surface, like goats or something, but a small portion of it. Ideally, everything for the livestock part of it really needs to be all-inclusive as far as one area, or else you're gonna have a huge expense in panels to make alleys get livestock back and forth. You know, your in-hand stuff, your, what I call in-hand is whatever you can feed. So you're feeding your horse, which horses always have a different time. But, you know, that's a little bit different, because, you know, it's a little bit easier to get them for A to B to get interested around, but your hogs and your sheep and stuff. So we're really actually not set up at all, turkey, none whatsoever, so.
Let me tell you a little story. In nineteen, in 2017, I went to the four H meeting. My wife and I repeated with the board. And I went down there and I said, "I'm now a Ford County Commissioner, and I'm always speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the other U. gentlemen. Let me tell you what I will do if you agree to do this deal, and I can get the other commissioners to go for this deal. I will personally go out and get money from big corporations." And I talked to several that would put out money to have what we was gonna do with this money, because I was gonna make a deal with the bank to create, this would be scholarships. This little kid, six years old, shows a chicken, and she gets a $50 deal. And 10 years later, she goes to college, and now this grows and grows and grows and grows with the bank. I offered to do that, just like Young Guns. I watched Young Guns develop. It was unbelievable what it did. Unbelievable. It didn't start out big, it ended up huge. And I offered to do that deal. But Jake was so concerned with that deal that he didn't even bother to call me and say that he weren't interested. Because one of them old ladies on there said, "I don't think I want to do that because we want to rent that building out because we get the money." And that was total garbage on her part and the four H part. And we can make this big, because when I was a kid, it was called Southwest Kansas Four-H Fair. We had Liberal, we had Cimarron, we had all those people coming in. You give away scholarships for those deals, the people will come from miles and miles and bring their kids. I promise you, that will happen. It will get huge, just like Young Guns. But you can have that same attitude she has and you have, but you can't have a positive attitude like I got, because it will get huge. I don't care what you say, I could make that work.
And I'm not disagreeing. All I'm doing is relating the conversation that I've had with Jake. And I've made it clear to Jake, because that's who I met with, that if the fair gets moved, that's fine, you know? I mean, I don't, I have, I'm indifferent either way. And I, I do believe in my thoughts, there are people that are fine with moving the fair, and there are some that have some hangups. We have some ideas on what those hangups are, and I've offered some ideas on how to alleviate those. But, you know, I said, "We sat down, we've got tons of notes as far as numbers over the last several years to kind of get an idea." And we stopped there because we wasn't sure the direction to go. Do we need to go ahead and get pricing to, you know, put everything together to make it work for the Ford County Fair? Is it making it work for the fair? Is it, do we need to, you know, make things work for other uses as well? And I haven't heard anything on the fair this year. I know other counties are doing a modified fair where individuals are coming one at a time, taking their envelope, showing it, voting and going. I don't know if that's what this county's gonna do, but that's what I've heard on other counties.
Yeah. The building down there right now will sell for enough to make the proof after, you know, that land and that building down there.
Don, there's two buildings down there.
There's actually three buildings, there are arena.
Arena.
There's a lot of farms in the neighborhood.
Yeah. So you're bringing forward a budget estimate to prepare the buildings?
Yeah.
That were done a year ago, how many need to be refreshed at some point with material costs?
Yeah. That will have to go through a big process.
Right.
Best $350,000 to repair those buildings.
Yeah.
So, Don, in your, in your opinion, this is something we had a need for last year?
Yes.
And it's more of a need now, I would assume?
Yeah, it's more of a rush than anything.
Does anybody know what the size of that property is?
Off the top of my head, we have that, we have that information.
We do. It's actually on, you have Chrome, you can go into Ford County site, go to GIS, and it'll pull up that whole site.
It goes from Park Street all the way to the river.
Yeah. What's on the backside of it?
It goes to where the, where it drops off to the old area where the river bed. So it doesn't go all the way. And I understand where the gutter, the trenches, the trinkets, all that, that's probably all city too, that's the property they're supposed to take care of.
Well, that's a pretty good size.
No, it's big.
Yeah, it's pretty big. I mean, it's still big, I just, it's difficult for them.
So my thought is, you know, if we didn't repair these buildings and instead we sold that, sold that property, do we need that property if we didn't? If we ceased having those fairs there, and we sold those buildings off? You know, maybe then we can finance some of the things that, at the Expo that
cooled buildings for birds.
Yeah, would need to be done in order to host that fair out there. I can't, I can't get behind repairing the buildings, I just, I can't do it, not right now.
Yeah. And I didn't want to sound like I was coming out against the fair by any means. It's one of the things that I'm trying to get a group to do an education piece here, which we were working with the Western State Bank Expo Building on as well. But due to COVID, it looks like it's pushed that back. But I think it's more along the lines of what you were saying with Young Guns, is we want to get professional people, teacher, the kids, and bring a different element of businesses behind it to support it. It'd be interesting to see what we could do. I, are we wanting to vote today on what to do with these buildings?
I don't think you need to make his decision right now.
Okay, it's just an update?
We're still going, yeah, we're still going to the budget session, so, I mean, that's what I think we'll be able to do this year anyway, so.
Okay. Gentlemen, any other questions for Don while we can?
Yeah, hold on. Don, do we have anything in there, equipment-wise, that we need to somehow protect with the leaks?
No.
Okay.
I haven't. I just read that the floor and stuff, the kitchen, the fair floor and all that, so that was one of the places we could, we patched it a few times and felt we had to solve, but there's time to do that eventually.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't ruining equipment or something like that.
No, it's pretty much kept the labor and stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
All right, next item is for the Expo Event Proposal Contract. Anybody else here to present?
Do you guys have a copy of that contract?
Yes, it's under the County Engineer Report on our little link, so.
That's fine. So what I'm just asking is just a renewal of the April American Cornhole Event that we are renewing, what should have taken place this past April, to renew it a year from now? Renew that date in April 2021.
And this will be the first time that's happened out there?
No.
Second?
We had December, yeah.
And the investment side of it on our end, tell me about that. Tell me how you feel about that part of it? Because I thought it was very, you know, from my side of it, I was like, okay, so we're paying you to come to our building, right? So what do we, what do we get out of that if we're?
Well, actually, we, the county's gotten quite a bit, and the city's gotten quite a bit more. So what the county's getting out of it is we're hosting a major. And so what that means is literally, and I guess this is for both city and county, literally people from all over came. We had California, Indiana, New Mexico, Utah, Wichita, Ohio, Iowa, Florida, Georgia.
Sure.
I mean, just literally everywhere. Number-wise, it wasn't a huge event, but with having a major, it's huge because those players that are working for the World Finals in Vegas, they're gonna come to it because they need points. And so the first one that we had was in December. I believe we had 130-some people, which was a little bit better than what we anticipated. But what's, what happened after that? So the local little bar organizations, you know, it's kind of like Darts, they have their little leagues. Well, there's cornhole leagues around town. So what's happened after the major in December was now they have a much bigger league. One of our residents in town here is now a sanctioned ACO official. And the Boot Hill Baggers is growing like crazy, that's the local league. So we, they're actually working with the organization out of Wichita and doing more regionals in this area, which, you know, benefits the community, hotel rooms, lots of food and beverage, you know, things like that. So what are, what my goal is with the majors is to bring the regional, not regional. It's not the right word, but they have like a regional finals, but it's this whole region. And I think right now it's currently held in College Station, and that's, that's our goal, is bringing it from College Station to the Expo Center. And that was his goal all along as well, because the region is, you know, Texas, Oklahoma, Nebraska, and everything just kind of in this quarter. So Dodge City is a fit for the location. And we have the space. And so that is our goal, and it was just a matter of getting it on the, getting it on the calendar, getting people to come and know that we can go to Dodge City.
You're excited about it?
I'm sorry?
Are you excited about it?
It's fun, I tell you. They're, they're a super easy group to have around. It's, other than, you know, the money that we pay them, it's a very low poll on our resources at the Expo Center. Now, we have one beer server, and I usually flow one other person through that's also a beer server to maintain restaurants and stuff. They have, they police their own people, and they make it clear, they understand that we have, we sell a lot of beer, cornhole, all day. And they police their own people, and they make it clear to any facility that they go to, you buy your beer here, you buy your beer there. You don't bring it in. They have a rule, if you bring beer into a facility that's selling the beer, you're kicked out, you're disqualified, you're done, and removed from the building. And they monitor that. They're an easy crowd of people to get along with, everybody's in a good mood, you know? They, they have, yeah, it's, it's, it is kind of fun to have, you know? So that's what our goal is, is to have to pull the event from College Station and bring it here. So if you guys agree with that, then I just need your signature, and I'll send it back to the organization to confirm that date for 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the event proposed for the Western State Bank Expo Center.
Hold on a second.
So we have a motion second, any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And you have a copy to sign?
Sure.
That's okay, that's okay.
Turn back to my upcoming meetings real quick. Okay, so number eight, we're, oh, yeah. So that's our coming meetings.
Well, upcoming meetings, we still have open enrollment going on right now for county staff that's been through throughout the month of May, it's online, so staff have to enroll online. We have the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in Orlando, Florida, still scheduled at this time from July 17th through July 20th. And then we have the Kansas County Commissioners Association Annual Conference, July 21st through 23rd, and that is in Liberal. And that is all I have for the County Administration Report, gentlemen.
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Motion second, some of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.